Welcome. This is part two of going over the warrant articles. If somebody is still awake, we appreciate you coming in. But it's important because our goal is not to influence people to vote yes or no. Town meeting has over 200 people who've done a fantastic job shepherding Milford through good and challenging economic times. The idea here is that we want you to understand what goes into each article. If you're really interested, the Finance Committee report to town meeting has the warrant, but the warrant intentionally is vague. A lot of the articles are, we need some money to do something sometime in the future and doesn't really describe all the details. But you can get the Finance Committee report, which takes advantage of all the information we learn while we vet the articles. So where did we leave off?
Article 27.
Yeah, this is always a fun one. We're gonna have a building that we're gonna burn.
So I guess we burnt it too much because it needs to be fixed. This is one of the, where they do the training and it's also, I believe, other regional towns use this building. And the discussion about charging other towns to chip in and into the cost, but we're not going to because of the other towns come in when our fire trucks are out on service and out on other calls and we need them for mutual aid, they come in and don't charge us for their mutual aid.
This building's always been a source of contention. Because when you burn something, it takes resources to unburn it. In words of one syllable, you know, realistically, this is a place where our firefighters can train for real fires and for other activities. Every so many years, you have to refurb the building because you just keep burning it. And for years, we asked the question, well, wait a second. If other towns are using it, because we're one of the few who have a burn building, why aren't we charging them? And the mutual aid comes into consideration. When we have a problem and we need a second ladder truck, or we need a second crew that we don't have, we call the local towns and they roll their equipment to us. And they're not calling our fire chief saying, is that Visa or MasterCard? You know, they come in, they do their job, they go home. So this is one way that we get, if I could say brownie points, but we kind of bank goodwill by letting them come in. And it's not just fires, it's other training and other activities.
I'm gonna ask a quick pro quo right there.
That's exactly what it is. Okay. Number 27.
I think we're on number 28, the compliance upgrades for communications. This is a big one. This is a million dollar, million dollar project. And this is one where it's really about looking at all the communications between town hall and then of course, the dispatch and police and fire and all of the communications between all of the first responders in town. And there was a project on, in the plans as part of the capital project to try to upgrade. We're gonna kind of take this in bites. But then some new requirements came along that just put us out of compliance and are forcing us to go faster on this. And what we're doing is getting out of the old copper wire system and getting into a fiber optic system and moving to a backup that's gonna be internet based and much more modern. So when you hear those words, which you're really, which you're really kind of imagining is moving out of an infrastructure that dispatches, police, fire, and you know, all kinds of support from town, right now that's working on 1960s and 70s technology and moving into a modern age. And you say like, it happened in probably a little quicker than we were hoping to do, but it's a compliance issue. We really have no choice. But it also makes a lot of sense that we should be upgrading this, this infrastructure. You look at the amount of calls, if you're anywhere near downtown, you remember calls that the rescue truck goes out on, you see how busy the police department is, making sure that people have good quality communication abilities. It keeps them safe, it keeps us safer, and now it's a requirement for us to keep up the date, so we gotta do this.
I mean, when Paul Revere put in our copper based system, it was state of the art. He could call to his horse and ride out and yell the British are coming. But over the years now, we hit the wall where all of the systems in the cars and the trucks are fiber based, yet our command center is copper based. So we wanted to upgrade that control center, which was 780,000. And then as Brent mentioned, we got the surprise that as of springtime, all copper systems go black. So you can't talk to your cars, your trucks. So that added another $300,000. I mean, this is, you mentioned how much Chris George is meant to us. I think it was last year that we upgraded the radios, because the radios we had were getting the Franklin Fire
Correct.
frequency. And again, doesn't mean anything, only if you're a police officer, you know, down by Oliva's trying to get help either for you or for somebody else, then it means something. Because it could mean life or death at that point. So little by little, we've been doing this. Now, Chris has said, as far as he knows, the couple, two and a half million dollars we've put in should be enough for a while.
Yeah, I think it just, you know, we're, we're investing in our town's safety and response for all of our citizens, right? You know, yes, it's a, it's a million dollar ask, but it's, it's a new system that's going to last a number of years. So when you start looking at the cost benefit, you know, certainly it's, it's something that I would hope that everybody in town would get behind.
And this is something that
It's a mandated cost too, though.
We don't have a choice.
Yes, we don't even have a choice, right.
Yep, but this runs right into, I hope I never ever have to use Mark Nelson's toys. I hope the fire department never comes to my house. But, or the police department, you know, Robbie and crew, I don't want to ever see them at my house. But when I need them, they gotta be there. And this just helps.
Yeah, it's still part of the infrastructure of safety.
The next one I like. Number 30. Rescind unused sewer bonding. Does everybody remember the $2 million that we did not spend?
Sure, so we got authorization for $2 million for the Field Pond Sewer Project to borrow money. And they didn't need to do it when it was all said and done, so we can unwind that authorization to borrow money. So it's a good project, you feel good about getting, getting the project done without needing to borrow money. And it's also, you know, also kind of a nod back to the sewer department and how they run independently and run off of the rate payers. So only the people that use the service are, you know, funding these projects, but they also have the ability to manage the money, manage the expenses, obviously save up as they go and handle projects like this. So I think it's a great thing.
Now, you bring up the point and people should remember, only the users of the sewer pay for any of these expenses. So this $2 million goes back into the sewer enterprise fund, which is totally independent of our stabilization, our long-term, short-term, many-term stabilization accounts that we have. Okay. Next thing we roll into is exterior lighting for the fire station.
Brent, what did that?
Sure, so it's a $45,000 project for exterior lighting at Burke Street. I believe they're going to LED lights as part of this too, which has been successful of a lot of projects around town, because you look at LED lights, we all see it at home, you know, you can take a normal house, hold bulb from 65 to 75 watts down to eight. And you think about how we've done that with streetlights around town, we've done it in the library projects, now we're doing this at the fire department. Personally like seeing us, you know, find a way to obviously keep things lit and safe, but also, you know, dramatically reduce the amount of electricity we're using.
Yeah, we did the police department last year on a grant. There was no grant for the fire department, so we have to do it. And that always comes up, why we've had, resident ask, why are we doing it if we don't need it? Well, it's like everything else, you could put off maintenance until you need it, and then all of a sudden, the lights go dark, something happens, and you gotta wait, either you pull an emergency lever, or you wait till the next town meeting six months later.
I think in a project like this, you know, you talked about how we work with the department heads, you know, Chief Nelson isn't coming to us with frivolous stuff, they're finding a lot of ways, like a lot of department heads are finding ways, but we see a pattern of people trying to find ways to get projects done, not asking for money. So he's got a lot of credibility as to a lot of department heads.
Yeah, especially Chief Nelson. He's followed the steps of Chief Tuohy Rev 1 and Chief Tuohy Rev 2, that they don't cry wolf. Usually when they come, you can bank on the fact that they've exhausted, because we try and nibble them and ask them questions to see if he really did the thorough vetting that he normally does. And Nelson always seems to, he learned well.
I think that too, anytime you look at these projects, it's going to replace lighting to LEDs, they're more energy efficient, they basically end up paying for themselves anyways too, right? The LEDs are much brighter, so there's that safety component. But again, they're far more efficient than the old lighting that's down there. And the $45,000, I can, I can sure say that it will pay, on incentive, it will pay for itself over the length of time.
We look at Article 31, is there anybody here that can talk about school boilers?
Um, I don't have my boilers license, so I really can't, but I can tell you about what we need to be able to allow those people to. So yeah, the, the school department's looking for the $650,000 ask, which covers about 50% of the, of the boiler replacement at Stacy Middle School. You know, the, the boilers that are currently there, three of them were, were installed in the mid 90s. You know, it's, it's 2023 right now, so certainly they, they're at their end of life. There was a grant out there for the $680,000. And that money is available now, so therefore we're going to town meeting and asking for the, the $650,000, and that will include the engineer, the assessment and engineering and the replacement costs.
Now, there is an answer to when somebody says, how close do you vet this? The boilers have been on the long-range capital plan, I don't know how many years, that we talked about buying one boiler a year
Correct.
For three straight years. And then we had the opportunity to take advantage of this grant, so instead of being 1.3 million dollars, it's still $650,000. It's still serious money, but better 650 than a million three.
Right, absolutely.
So we moved forward to the boilers. Is it now gonna be two big boilers or?
Well, that's the, that's the great part about this grant and the available funds is it allows us to assess those boilers that are currently there and engineer a set of boilers to replace them. So currently, right now, there are three boilers, but due to, you know, the efficiency of boilers now, we may be able to drop down to two boilers.
But we still get to keep to 650.
Exactly, 100%.
So from that end, we don't know if we're gonna buy three boilers, two boilers, two boilers with a third to add on, whatever the best plan for the school is, we'll take advantage of that.
Correct.
And you can't let go of 650 in hand.
Exactly, yes, but again, it's, it's another project that 50% is being, is being funded outside of our town requirements or asks.
Now, we look at 32. Compensated absences. You wanna explain to me, Lucy, what compensated absences means?
I won't be Lucy this time.
So we're replenishing, we're putting $250,000 into the compensated absences fund. So it's really about sick and vacation time provisions and it relates to police and fire. These are, these are funds, this is probably the second one, I think, we've talked about tonight, where there's some funds you just need to replenish from time to time. You know, you look at it and say like, well, I looked to Zach and say, you know, his judgment about, hey, it's time to put a little more money back into the pot for something like this. And again, it's for police and fire, for sick and vacation time buyback provisions. He's saying it's time to put a little bit back in, time to put something back in.
When you think about, we talked about changing the language for all the employees away from sick and vacation buyback when they retire. We said except for police and fire, because it's part of their contract. So it depends on how many people retire and what their longevity has been. So you never quite know, it's not like something we can say, Joe is retiring, Sally's retiring, so we know it's $32.80 of buyback. We put in 250,000, we let it get down to 100,000, which is the worst we've seen in a year. So over the last couple of years, we've eaten up what we put in, we're at 100,000. So we're asking for 250 to bring the fund back up. Because you don't wanna go below it and have to have an emergency meeting, this is my contract, you don't have a choice. Okay, fire rescue truck, number 33.
I like this project. This is replacing the rescue truck. So if you have imagery of, mental image of people, the vehicles coming in and going out at the fire department, you see the big, the big trucks, the ladder trucks, and you know, you have that mental image, but there's also a, I call it a pickup truck, but it's obviously been heavily modified and has a bunch of equipment on the back of it, but you can tell the frames of that and the chassis of that is a big pickup truck. We need to replace ours, they've scheduled to replace $133,000 rescue truck, we'll try to keep the other one around as a backup. But why this truck is really important and why it appeals to finance people like myself, the profile of our calls, thankfully, is not big fires where you need to have rescue truck number one go and the big expensive multimillion dollar vehicles go. There's an awful lot of, you know, medical emergencies where this truck goes at high velocity, it's in and out all day long. You want to take the $130,000 truck in and out all day long and save the really expensive equipment for the really big fires when you need those things and not run those things and wear them out. So this is a smart project and trying, because that's, the, the towns' needs are changing, the profile's changing. Thankfully, you don't need to run the big fire trucks for big fires that, you know, at high velocity, but you do have these high velocity, you know, medical rescue calls, which is where smaller vehicle that's more nimble, cheaper, has the right profile to get in and out of spaces, you go, this makes a lot of sense, I like that they have this truck and wanna have another one. It's really a replacement for the one that's kind of worn, but I think they can keep the other one as a little bit of a backup.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head. Rescue One or Engine One is gonna be $700,000, $800,000. So minimizing the wear and tear on that by using $100,000, I mean, $100,000 is a lot of money. But I'd rather replace that $100,000, $133,000 truck more often than an $800,000 truck.
Correct.
Absolutely.
Okay. Doggy air conditioning.
So I guess the, you know, for the animal control HVA system.
Number 34.
Yeah, I guess the, the animal control building, the HVA system is a little rough. So they're getting a new HVA system so it can make it purr better. I have to get my roughen fur.
Yeah.
So yeah, so I guess the dogs and cats are huddling together and
And the people who work there. I mean, without a good Hy-Vac system, you got problems. Not just for the animals, but for the people who are in and out of there. I mean, the killer is, when you look at a Hy-Vac system and you say, how much are you asking for doggy air conditioning? And you gotta realize, a home system now is $9,000, $10,000.
Oh, yeah.
For a central air system.
Absolutely. For one.
For one.
A lot of houses have two, that, you're north of $20,000, no problem.
Right, exactly. I have five. And you hit the, you hit the, the fun part of, the lifetime is 25 years, and then you realize I've been in the house 30 years, so now every year, one or two of them go out.
It's on the capital plan.
Yeah, unfortunately, I have no capital plan, married with children, no capital. But the idea is, let's see, how much is it?
It's up to $40,000.
$40,000 for one unit to take care of the whole place.
Yeah, it's gonna last a while.
Right, exactly.
Okay, here's one that nobody understands.
Yeah, Article number 35 from the police chief. So Chief De Sino came in to see us, it's about replacing the lockers. Again, I've not seen them personally, it's a $465,000 project, but his description of it was really helpful. What he was describing is that there are some lockers down there, I'd probably remind you of kind of old fashioned gym lockers, and he's saying, hey, hang on a second, folks, you wanna think hard about this, you know, you have officers that have maybe small children at home and you wanna leave your firearm at the station, they don't have a place to lock them up. You wanna have a locker where you can charge your radio with wiring built into that, so you can actually charge your radio and not have to bring it home and charge it and keep track of these kinds of things. You're imagining it being like a little personal station where people could have their equipment and, you know, maybe tasers, maybe mace, all the things that they need to do their job that maybe you don't wanna have people going in and out of homes with them all the time. Some officers might choose to, some might not, but it's a good idea for people to have the optionality to be able to secure these things safely. And I was stunned to find out that they actually have no place to do that, they just have some sort of, you know, lockers that you might remind you of an old gym. And so this is a project to modernize that and to give the officers a place.
Well, the guy who was there before, Chris here, has had a school committee, donated some lockers. And that's what they were, they were lockers to hang your coat, to hang your uniform. But all of a sudden, like you say, today's, unfortunately, today's police officer has a lot that he has to manage. You know, it's not just a gun, you know, because you think of, well, I buy them, it's a little safe. Okay, how about the ammunition? Hmm, how about the taser? Hmm, how about the pepper spray? Hmm, how about, how about, how about? And yet, we also have them with radios that we just bought them. Where do you charge those? Well, you put them in a central place in the police department, you have them all over the place. It makes no sense. When we say lockers, I wish we had thought about it and said, officer containment area, because these containment centers, as Brent said, are strong enough, have the security built in to allow rifles, pistols, tasers, ammunition, all to be safely stored. And then also, a place where you can put your radios and your electronic ear, it's your area that you can store it, so when you come in in the morning, you don't have a dead radio. So I mean, it's ridiculous, a half a million dollars for lockers. When we grew up, you could have bought Milford for half a million, they would have thrown in Oakdale.
Just wanna point out that it's, it's also demolishing what they have now, so it's, it's lockers plus.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but all kidding aside, with what we expect our police officers to handle, it's not fair. I mean, you got little kids, do you want all those arms in your house?
No.
You know, you can't ask somebody to put their family in danger or for them to build a room to store the stuff. This is part of the town's responsibility.
And we know that the cost of doing business now is just more expensive, you know, it's a, this is a construction project, and we all know that that takes, you know, increased costs, you know, but it, it's a personal equipment storage area, and it sounds like too, based on your explanation, that there is not just a bunch of shelves, there is going to be electrical infrastructure, you know, to be able to charge their equipment that they'll need for the next day, and it'll have, you know, also infrastructure to be able to securely store their equipment too, where it's not just in a gym locker, like that was originally from the school, so.
Well, you think about, you mentioned electric.
It's a great ask.
You got 50 officers, that's a lot of electric coming in there. That has to be wired now properly. You know, you've got heavy duty containment areas, because you certainly, I mean, I can't imagine anybody being less than intelligent and trying to break into the police station to steal a pistol or ammunition. But a lot of the things that you read about, you can't imagine somebody would do.
These are one and done projects too, it's one of those, there's a, there's not, life cycle is infinity basically, so.
Right, yeah, or it's another 20 years from now when, when technology is, has developed in that next phase, right?
Right, so.
36. Fire chief's vehicle. And obviously, people ask the question, why does he need a big SUV, why can't he have a little Kia?
Well, the answer is that, when you think about the chiefs, the deputy chiefs' trucks, I mean, those are really command centers that, they need to be ready to get to a scene, somebody needs to be ready, one of those two, 24 hours a day, and you get there right away. They don't have time to like, let's go down to the station and get my truck and then get there, they go straight there, they need to be equipped to run the scene. So there's a rotation of the vehicles, this one is $75,000 for the new one for the chief. I understand it right, the chief's one then bumps down to the deputy chief and they kind of
Done to inspector.
Right, so they work their way down, so, but you, part of that process of bumping them down is every so often you need to put a new one at the top of the, of the sort of pyramid there. So this was scheduled, part of the capital plan, $75,000 for this truck, but really have that image of like, this isn't a fun vehicle, this is really a work vehicle that's ready to go. If you know where any of these folks live around town, you'll see that truck backed into their driveway, ready for action 24/7, because they are.
And I can't remember if it was Tuohy Rev 1 or Tuohy Rev 2 that walked us through, when he shows up at a fire, opens up his back of this, of his vehicle, it becomes the command center. So he has to have the board, it was so many things that work out of that truck, and you couldn't make him small enough to fit in a Kia, so.
I don't know if I wanna be going out in a Kia in the middle of January when it's, there's a nor'easter too.
Yes. Okay.
Would you like me to take care of 37?
I think you know a little bit about 37.
Exactly, so, yeah, this is again, a school committee request for funds for a, some fencing to go around the woodland turf field and also some netting to go on one end of the turf field. Currently, right now, there is netting on one side, there's not netting on the other side, so we're, again, we're looking to put some netting, so when a lacrosse ball, a soccer ball, a football, anything is errantly passed or kicked or thrown, that it doesn't go out into the, the very tall weeds and trees
And prickly bushes.
And older growth that's there. So this is a big benefit to all of the athletes that utilize that location. The fencing, which will be on each side of it, is to protect our investment. There are basically kind of a walkway along the side there, which is also can be considered a bike path, so bikes can, if a cyclist is coming down that pathway, they could traverse across the field, and certainly we'll wanna prevent that, that has happened, the staff at, at the school is, is seeing that, so again, it's just a, a request to protect our investment and to deter bicycles from going across that turf field and, and kind of putting additional wear and tear on that field.
Well, we've talked about it, I, I always say that I look at these fields around town, whether it's the high school turf field or woodland turf field or any of the parks, that these things are really hubs of our community, when you go out and spend some time there, you see how many people go out and use these resources, you assured me that you're just trying to protect it, you're not preventing people from using the field, which I think is a fantastic move for people that care about use of these fields and have their kids be able to go out and play. And as a representative of the Milford Youth Lacrosse Program, I would say that the, a net on the north end is probably worth 50 to 100 balls for us, you know, on an annual basis, because they go into the woods and they're not coming back.
Right.
So it'll, it'll help everybody.
Can't you just tell the kids not to miss the net?
Well, it's the away teams most of the time.
Okay, okay, we have no control over them.
Yeah, and I think as a former soccer coach in the youth league, yeah, I can't even count how many soccer balls I've gone to retrieve, because again, it's, it's high grass and you're worried maybe, is there ticks in there? So you don't want
Yeah, but you got the prickly bushes and the thorns. So now, how many times as a coach you're looking saying, I can't send a kid in there, but I need the ball.
Right.
So in you go and you get all scratched up and
Right, exactly, for the benefit of the kids.
I mean, you know, the crazy part is, $150,000. It's a huge amount of money.
Right.
But that's the price that you paid today, because it's not only the fence, it's all the netting.
It's the netting, and the netting's probably about $30,000 worth of this request, but when you start thinking about the amount of chain link fence going down each side, you're talking about 300 feet per side.
And you also think about industrial fences too, right?
Right.
I promise you, somebody's gonna hang on the fence and somebody's gonna try to climb it at some point after hours, somebody's gonna hang on these things, and these will be built to withstand a little bit of rain.
Yep, and it's not just a full fence, there'll be some gates, as, you know, as we said with it, we, we're not preventing everybody from using the field, we just wanna protect it, so there certainly will be accessibility gates and things like that.
Injury on duty fund, number 38.
Yeah, this is just bringing it back to a level that you cover three years. This is for medical expenses for, for, uh, police This is for medical expenses for police officers and firefighters. And it's just refunding the, the account.
This again, you can't plan for who's going to get hurt. So you keep a certain amount in a fund, so when they do get hurt, we can take care of them. And it's come to a point now where we've used up the funds. Number thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine comes under the, the police chief. And it really relates to, although I'm confused about the dollar value, it's either four or five hundred thousand depending on, do you know which one it is? Because it looks like the numbers are a little bit different, but maybe it's a four hundred thousand dollar ask. But I believe it's really a transfer from the opioid settlement fund. And it's really about a transfer of money so we can put this to use to support people with really clinical, medical, mental health support. The transfer, I think, is just one of those things we have to do. But we know the money comes from the opioid settlement funds.
Isn't this the one where the state, God bless their souls, wrote it up incorrectly? Instead of giving us the money into the account that we want, they gave it to us in the general fund?
Oh, right.
Okay. So again, town meeting giveth and town meeting taketh away. So now that they have the money, they have to allocate it over. But this is something that Robbie seems to be the firebrand, the leader of taking care of our citizens on these kind of programs.
I agree. I've, I've really appreciated his, his heartfelt messages to really, how to think differently about supporting everybody at every moment in their life. You know, when people are having a hard time, there's got to be more than one way to support them besides just an officer, you know? And sometimes people need a different type of care. I just like that type of forward thinking and supporting people in different ways.
You know, he brought up when he set up the first grant, that the hospital didn't have room for everybody. And people were being let out on the street because the hospital couldn't deal with them.
There's nowhere to go.
There's nowhere to go. So he started setting up places for families. And these are Milford people. You know, whether you appreciate it or not, these are Milford people who are hurt and they need help. And it's not arresting them, it's not sending a police officer, the police can't do anything.
Right.
But I'm really proud of our new police chief and his efforts to take care of our citizens. Okay, labor negotiations outside council, number forty, hundred sixty grand.
A hundred sixty thousand dollars, it's, it's really about paying outside counsel for the next two to three years to assist us in these negotiations. Our town council obviously is pretty busy, does an awful lot. And there are certain instances where we use outside resources to help kind of augment. So that's what this is funding for the next two to three years.
I mean, we've been lucky that we've got two part-time barristers. And with the knowledge that Jerry Moody brings and one side you had Jerry on the legal side, the other side you had Brian, who's also an attorney, on the municipal side. We do benefit from their experience. But there's only so much they can do. Brian does have a day job, like passing laws that bring more money to Milford. So we need outside counsel. Plus, a lot of times, it's better to have an outsider negotiating. Because you could be negotiating with your neighbor or whatever.
Very true.
So that's a lot of money. I think everything's a lot of money, but it's well spent. Okay, the next one. Liabilities claim fund, number forty, oh, no, women, forty-one carpet tiles, town hall.
So I guess the town hall carpet, the age is probably the same year as my first car, so. It's time to go. They're replacing it with tiles, which I guess it's more cost effective in the long run to replace. The maintenance is easier, so it costs us two hundred and twenty thousand dollars and it's to refresh them.
Well, the idea is if you're doing tiles and something happens, somebody drops or wee-wees on the tile, you can take the tile up and replace a single tile.
Exactly.
Whereas what's there now is rolls and it's not as easy to cut out a stain or something.
It's a, it's town hall, it's a high traffic area, you know, we're, we're seeing it with the police station, we're seeing it with the library. You know, the, we've done it at the schools. You know, it's just, it's, it's that kind of almost preventative maintenance program, right? You know, they, it's just wear and tear and you've got to sooner or later go through and, and replace it and keep the aesthetics and the appreciation of our town buildings.
Yeah, the first impressions is the town buildings that you walk into, so.
Well, it's the impression too that you give.
Right, exactly.
And, you know, eventually, if you don't take care of it. I mean, the impression that, I mean, I've gone to some towns where the town hall looks less than pleasant. And you don't want people thinking that of Milford.
Definitely not.
Okay, total liability, the town liability claims fund, two and a half million smackers.
Yeah, I think that's the biggest, that is the biggest thing on this, from a dollar perspective, on this warrant. Town liability claims fund, what it's really about is the town has been self-insuring since, think about nineteen ninety. So what that means is instead of paying premiums to an insurance company who was in it for profit, we're self-insuring by squirreling away some money and then paying some of the, you know, paying the, the, instead of claiming against us directly out of that fund. What we need to do is put some money back into the fund. So this is putting two and a half million back into the fund. I think there's always debate about how much should have been at any one time. You could always say, well, I'd like there to be more. There's a balance between making sure you have, have enough in there to cover what's in front of you versus taxing people the squirrel money away for, for, you know, having it sit there forever. I'm not sure you need, you know, a whole lot of money there, but two and a half million dollars puts us back into the range. You know, again, it's balancing, again, taxing residents and squirreling money away and saying, okay, we generate some interest versus, you know, just making sure you have enough cash in there for what's in front of you. The trick in this, something like this though, is just don't ignore it. So maybe we got a little bit behind because you hate to have to do two and a half million a lot of times. You'd like it to be kind of a steady drip where you're kind of, you know, putting that money away.
Well, the good news is, if something catastrophic happened, we've got stabilization. We've got the long-term stabilization, the short-term, we don't know what to call it, stabilization. We have money. So that we can self-insure. Because what we found back in the nineties was that we were paying out a lot less in claims than we were in insurance policies. So we were better off taking a policy with a monument, you know, a huge deductible in case the town hall blew away or something. And tucking that money away, now, as you say, we can argue that it should have been more every year. Always savings, but if we put more into this, it would have been less into stabilization. So to me, it felt like right pocket, left pocket. As long as it's going into a pocket and not being spent, that felt pretty good.
But I think the, I totally agree. I think the point though is, it's time to do this.
Yes, and it's time to do it heavy. So now we can take a breather for a little bit, not zero, but take a breather for a little bit. The next one, bylaw forty-three.
Yes, some zoning changes. So basically, the, obviously, it's a, it's a very comprehensive list that you see in the, the packet in front of us. But overall, the zoning board, excuse me, the planning board is just looking to kind of rezone some areas of town, in particular where Archer Rubber was, right? So that former site there and, and make it more business friendly overall. You know, the other aspects that kind of go along the, the Charles River watershed area, that's, a lot of that's underprotected land that, that the town of Milford actually already owns and out of the conservation commission. So realistically, again, you're really looking at that Archer Rubber area and just trying to rezone it to make it a little bit more business friendly. The, in, the heavy industrial zoning that it currently is really just doesn't fit that area as well as it did way back when Archer Rubber was there. I'm can, sure can say that the neighbors in that area probably would not want to see another Archer Rubber. We would never, never really want a heavy industrial building over the Charles River that goes right through that area. So again, it's just as, this is just as our town has evolved, I believe that, you know, that their zoning needs to evolve to.
Plus, like you said, you don't really want an industrial account sitting over your water supply.
No, definitely not.
But that's a great start to the redevelopment thought process of that area, so. You have to start somewhere and this is probably the first step of the thought.
Yeah, I said, and I think a lot of people may have some questions because there is, you know, there's a, a lot of areas that are being kind of moved around, I should say, or rezoned, so. But overall, you know, we looked at it from the planning board's side and the, the best interests of the, of the neighborhood overall.
Forty-four, bet you people don't know we have a Purchase Street firehouse.
You're probably right. You know, it's kind of small, it's sitting right there on the side of Purchase Street. We all drive by it an awful lot and kind of, oh, right, that's that old firehouse, right? Just like there's the school, the old school up the road there. But we do own this and I think we do store some equipment in there from time to time. But it needs some repairs. I think it's kind of slowly falling down like everything. Every property I've owned is slowly falling down. It's about, about propping it back up all the time. So you look at it and say, this is what, this is what's happening here. So there's thirty thousand dollars worth of repairs, this need for this.
We have to button it up because there's starting to be some holes and the weather gets in.
It'll fall down eventually if you don't take care of it.
Right.
So this way, we have a place to store equipment. We don't use it as an active, it's not like you're rolling cars or trucks in and out of it. But it is a storage place and the town does own it.
Sure, it has some historical significance to the town too, to, to keep it and maintain it, I'm sure. Families here that had people working there at part of that firehouse, I'm sure would like to see it.
Exactly. A little bit of history.
Number forty-five, a front end loader for the highway department.
So we have a twenty-eight-year-old front end loader that we're using for snow, kind of helping with major snowstorms. I think it's a snow blower attachment to the, on the front of this thing. So, you know, when you get something this old, the story is the same. It doesn't matter what the equipment is, but it starts getting harder to find parts. And people, our department has tried pretty hard to keep these things running, fix them up, find new parts. But you get to a point where the parts just aren't available for old equipment anymore. So this is really a replacement. It's been part of the capital project for many years. So it's a new, new loader-mounted snow blower. So you imagine that, you know, it's a snow blower in the front of like a front end loader kind of piece of equipment. And it's going to snow this winter, can't tell you how much or when, but it will.
Right, and, and I think this is one of those pieces of equipment, you know, when you need it, you need it. And when you have a, a heavy winter, when we get, you know, a hundred plus inches of snow and all of a sudden our two-way streets become a one-way street because, you know, the snowbanks can only get piled up so high and so far over, you know?
And that's what the snow blower does.
Right.
You know, if you think about it, a couple of years ago, the snow was so high, my driveway looked like a slough chute. It was, the plow guy came and said, I can't plow you anymore. I push it, it goes up and falls right behind me. So we had to get in a front end loader to scoop the snow out and drive it down the end of the driveway. Well, that's on a micro level. For a town, you need something like this that's manly, you know, that can really take care of blowing the snow out of the way.
I think when you look at a system that's currently twenty-eight years old and this new system's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I mean, it just makes good business sense to, to upgrade and purchase.
Now forty-six, we're talking about Fino Field renovations, we got a grant.
This was a passover, right?
Yes.
The grant is valid until two thousand twenty-six, so we didn't, there was nothing really to go with an urgency as far as how the grant money was going to be spent, so it's going to be passed over this.
No, we tip our hats to parks not trying to rush to spend the money. When they came in front of the capital committee and we talked, they said they hadn't had time to do proper due diligence as to what's the best options. So they pass it over. They don't, don't lose anything and they'll come back next year after they've had a year to prepare.
Yes, and it's, it's a great way of doing things.
Now, number forty-eight, this caused all sorts of questions. Parking lots, and I was amazed at the five different parking lots.
Forty-seven?
Is it forty-seven?
We'll go back to forty-seven for the.
Oh, I skipped over the skate park.
Skateboard park.
Sorry. Forty-seven, skate park.
So this is a feasibility study for a skate park. To see, I know there's a lot of people out there, including the person sitting next to me, that likes to skateboard and is really interested in having a skate park. I might join you with my kneepads and helmet, but we'll see. Yeah, so this is.
The only way we're going out there on a skate park is if we're dressed as the Michelin Man. Brand may be the only one that can go up there.
Another initiative by the town to see if, you know, skate park is a good idea to have people, another activity that people don't have to sit home and be behind a keyboard and play video games. So it'll be great to have another activity such as a skate park, so this is a feasibility study.
Well, this one, unlike some of the other, like we did frisbee golf. And we didn't know if that was going to work, or it has apparently very well. The skateboard area, until it fell apart, my understanding was, was well-used at Town Park. So we know there's interest, even from people like me who have to dress up as the Michelin Man. We just don't know where. And that's what the feasibility study. But town meeting members should understand, you're funding a feasibility study, they're going to come back with options. And the options are not going to be twenty thousand dollars.
What's great about a sport like this, you know, somebody, I self-identify as probably the only member with his own skateboard. I grew up riding a skateboard and one of my, one of my kids said, you know, we were messing around, why don't you get your own dad? I'm like, I'm going to get another one, so let's go out there. It's fun to be a kid again, but a sport like that, it's an alternative to ball sports. And, you know, we have a great bike path, which is an alternative to using the track or going for a run on the roads or riding your bike wherever. And the bike path is amazing, the amount of use it gets. Skate park's another alternative sport for kids to get outside, do something different. It's, you know, ball sports are great, riding a skateboard's great, playing music is great, all these different things that people can do. When you see skate parks in towns, you do see a lot of kids outside having fun. If, if we can find the right project for this town and the right location, it could be a fun thing for the town.
And I think that's what it's all about, is finding that, that right location for that. And that's why you have to get an outside source to help you determine that. And therefore, there's less finger pointing going on where, well, why did you pick that location? Was it just one person? No, it was a feasibility study that, and they looked at multiple locations and they determined these, this location or these multiple locations were the best places.
And the rumor is not true that the preferred location is Brand's backyard.
His neighbors.
His neighbors. Okay, we roll into number forty-eight. This is one that we've been planning for years. I mean, we have parking lots, they're getting used, they're falling apart, they need to be resurfaced.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the, so this is a project for a bunch of parking lots, I'll just do it first. And so it says, we approved up to six hundred thousand dollars. So it's Plains Park, there's the small lot and the large lot, there's Louisa Lake, Fino and Rosenfeld Park, parking lots. So it's, it's five different parking lots that are going to get paved. We hadn't originally planned to do them all at once, but you've heard a theme through the conversations about there's times when you do your diligent planning and if you have strong financial positions, that sometimes you can find ways to get savings, like doing the boilers all at once instead of doing three. Here we have a three-year contract where we can have a paving at a fixed price. That's when they'll, coming into the third year of that paving contract. We know that, that when it's over, that, you know, with inflation and the cost of materials, the paving's going to be a lot more expensive. So we could do just one-third of this this year, which is the original plan. We know the next two-thirds that are in front of us will be at a much more expensive square footage rate. So because we've been planning and because we have the financial stability, we can pull those forward, get them on this contract right now and save a whole bunch of cash over the, of the long run. There's no way that we would have, you know, made that money back some other way with, you know, by saving that cash and investing it or doing something like that. It's a good use of cash to try to pull these forward and, and save the money.
No, we figured there'd be what, seventy-five thousand dollar increase in the new bid?
Probably.
So you start looking, saying, as you mentioned, you're not going to make seventy-five thousand dollars in investment on this money in a year. But we can essentially save seventy-five thousand. And the parking lots have to be redone.
Yeah, they're getting rough.
Right. I mean, I was amazed when I start looking at Plains Park at thirty-two thousand square feet. The small lot was fourteen, so it's forty-six thousand square feet in the Plains area. Louisa Lake was fifty, forty-nine thousand plus an extension. Fino Vittolato Field, Fino Field was eighty thousand, Vittolato was seventeen, and even Rosenfeld was forty-three thousand square feet. That's a lot of acreage to cover.
And you mentioned Louisa Lake, that extension, I kind of forgot about that extension. So if you drive by right now, you see there's a gravel parking lot extending that. And I, you know, from the untrained eye, look at it and say, I bet you that new frisbee golf course has a lot to do with it. Because I see people are using the parks, there's not enough parking spaces, they made a gravel lot and that's.
Fully utilized, yes.
So you know what, you know, I, I like. So you know what, you know, I, I like projects that are, you know, funding parking spaces like this, or access to outside for families to get outside, go for a walk, go to the lake, play frisbee golf, whatever that is, we've got these resources, I would gladly pay for a little more parking if, so people get out there and have fun with their families, and that's what you see whenever you go down there, people out there fishing, going for a walk.
And the last one, number forty-nine, this fits into what we've been doing for the last few years, where you turn around and say, if we have a surplus, which luckily for the last sixteen years we have, we had an eight million dollar surplus, we take a large portion of that and put it towards the tax rate, because after all, it's not our money, and I know people argue that we should spend it, but candidly, when I look at forty-nine art, or forty-eight articles, I can't think of anything that we did not do because of money. There's things we didn't do because we just didn't think they made sense, but that, to me, is smart use of cash. So if you think about when we have a surplus, as a finance committee, we've recommended a third or close to that be put towards the tax rate, not that it lowers taxes, but it keeps our taxes from going up higher. A third or a little bit more this year to go towards capital, because we budget one-point seven-five million dollars a year in capital?
Not nearly enough.
Not nearly enough, that's half or
But we knew this would happen, it was part of the plan.
And then the last part is to take a chunk and put it in stabilization, and if you think about it, this is school coming, and that school, God bless us, I think if we get away with a hundred seventy-five million, we'll be happy.
Right, you know, we just, it's that great unknown, and we just know that the cost of construction's ever increasing, right?
And interest rates are more expensive every time you turn around.
Exactly, so, yeah, you know, it's like, we can plan for it, and we have to plan for it in the most excessive way, right, or the rainyest day fund overall, but we just don't
Well, we've been lucky, because people keep coming back saying, you said you needed it for Brookside, and you never touched the money you put in stabilization. You're right, we got lucky, we had surplus money, and we paid off all our bills without touching stabilization. You said you needed it for Woodland. You're right, and we got lucky and had a surplus, but if you look at the fleet, this is the aircraft carrier.
Right.
You know, when you talk about Woodland, it's sixty million dollars, that was a stunt, stunning number, you know, twenty-eight million, we had to go bond, but this is three times that. So we don't know, but it could be adding seven to eight million dollars of interest expense to our budget coming up pretty shortly.
Absolutely, it's far bigger than the last project, and the interest rate environment is very, very different. That's something borrowed from the water department, it was like, they were like giving us cash to even do a bond, right, those bond premiums we've done all these projects with, the interest rate environment is gonna make this far more expensive to borrow, so having this stabilization is absolutely crucial to face a project like this, and to know that Stacy's behind it someday.
Well, you think about it, we have five major schools in Milford. The average life of a school is forty to fifty years before you either demolish the school or major refurb, so that means every ten years.
Right.
You know, so the joke when I say there's a school coming, you said that eight years ago, yep.
Yep.
And I'll say it again, because as soon as the high school's done, Stacy will be online or Memorial.
Yep, easily.
Yeah, and it's just how that pipeline works too, so, you know, we've submitted our statement of interest over the last couple of years, we're still waiting for the MSBA, you know, which is the Massachusetts Building Authority, to come back with some type of avenue that we're going to pursue, so until then, we have to maintain our buildings, which is at a cost also, so you never know if you'd have to go to a stabilization fund just in order to do a quick repair or anything like that, so again, it's just, that stabilization fund, I look at it too, as, as something that is the just-in-case, right?
Rainy day fund.
Yeah.
And we did put away an earmarked, I mean, there's no law that says we have to spend it that way, but we put away one-point seven-five million for a feasibility study.
Exactly.
So when the SBA comes back to the school committee and says, can you get your feasibility study funded? Well, it's a lot easier to get approval from town meeting if you already have the money put aside.
And we've looked at that from the finance committee's side and presented that to you a couple, for the last couple of years, as, as a preparation
And we just keep, well, you know, the fact that we're sitting here, school committee, finance committee, working together on all these issues, says a lot for Milford. Because I always get a kick out of listening to or reading about different towns, that the finance committee's fighting the school committee over funding. Right pocket, left pocket, how I'm fighting myself.
Exactly, you know, we've worked well together with, we've seen an increase in our school population, and we've presented that to FinCom, and you've understand, understood the need and the need for, you know, more personnel to be able to offset the increase of
And I was the one that always busted the good Dr. Tremblay's chops about adding one kid per year. Why do you need all this extra space? And I understood that the requirements today are much different than when I was a kid, you know, when we went to Milford High, you had to park your horse, but realistically, now, we're adding two hundred a year. Two hundred a year is a memorial school.
Right, exactly, our, our average class sizes are way beyond three hundred now, students.
So, well, thank you for joining.
Thanks for having us.
We got through forty-nine articles. Again, thank you for putting up with us and hopefully not falling asleep, but this will be on YouTube tomorrow, so that you can watch it in small bites, and also, we're working towards a new system where all the materials that are provided to the Capitol Subcommittee will be placed on the website, the town's website, so any resident can go, or anybody, can go there and look at the background. Every article that comes before the Capitol Subcommittee, everybody that submitted it knows the five questions, and the submitter has to answer those five questions and provide the information to answer those five questions, which shows you what they're doing, why they're doing it, how they're doing it, and all the catalogs and information. So as a resident, it's your money we're recommending the town meeting spend, so you, we all believe you should have access to all the data we have. So thank you again to our six loyal viewers, and maybe because it's town meeting, we'll have seven or eight, may God bless, may tomorrow be a better day than today, and thank you for helping us help Milford. Good night, all.